Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order. Can we all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This is a little low. Can I get a motion to consider an act upon the minutes of October 17, 2022, December 5, 2022, and January 9, 2023?
So moved.
Thank you. I'll second. And is there any discussion on the minutes? All right. Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries now. So thank you. I just want to bring up, we had two resignations. Burr Gardens, the chairperson resigned, and also Sarah Keat, who won the seat in 134th, she resigned on 11/28/22. I just want to thank them both for their service to our community on the boards, various boards that they served. And I'll just open it up to the board. Do you have anything, Nancy?
Just to thank both very much for their service and to wish Sarah good luck, Sarah Keat, good luck up in Hartford.
All right. Our next item is item number five. Make a motion to approve Sally Conley for reappointment to the Board of Health. Do I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
I am going to, like I normally do, I'm going to ask Ms. Conley if she would like to come up and say any words about your service on the Board of Health or anything else you'd like to say.
Hi, and thank you. My name is Sally Conley, and I've been serving on the Board of Health since, I believe, I can't believe it, the fall of 2019. We figured it out. Obviously, I'm put in that position, it was pre-pandemic, so in the past, the Board of Health was a pretty quiet board, from what I've heard, and it turned into being, obviously, a very important board during the pandemic. I've definitely enjoyed serving on the board. Personally, I feel like it was very important to have my perspective in addition to the perspective of, you know, we have physicians, nurses. I am a speech-language pathologist. From day one after the, you know, really in the midst of the pandemic, when everything was shut down, I continued to go into the homes of patients and really see things from an inside perspective, which the other board members did not have different perspectives of either being virtual or otherwise. Also, as a mom of four kids who, especially at the time, were in public schools, I witnessed the challenges from a variety of age levels, elementary, middle school, and high school, and really the ramifications that had on the students. So I feel like I definitely had a different perspective, oftentimes, from other people who were looking at it from more of a distance, and felt the need to very much advocate for those kids. I think we're now seeing the after effects of COVID. You know, certainly I have my opinions that we could have been more proactive, but here we are, doing our best in 2023. And so the other thing I think that's important is that as a member in the role that I'm at, in a busy nurse capacity, I actually am the physician liaison for all of the hospitals, clinics, and skilled nursing facilities, and also assisted livings in all of Fairfield County. So that includes Fairfield all the way to Greenwich. So I am the liaison for Norwalk Hospital, Stanford Hospital, Greenwich Hospital, and all the clinics. And we actually service, my company services, an almost 90% Medicaid population. So we have a very diverse, socioeconomically diverse population. So again, really seeing the gamut of what's happening in the homes, not just in Fairfield, but in greater Fairfield County. So I think it is a unique perspective to add to the board, and really my opinion.
All right. Thank you, Sally. I appreciate that. And obviously, that is a lot of information and a lot of knowledge that you bring to and your perspective to the board.
Should I sit down? Or I don't know how this is.
I don't know if you want to stay up. I'm sorry. I'm going to open it up to the board. Nancy, do you have anything?
I do. And, you know, I appreciate, hi Sally, I appreciate that you do bring a certain perspective to the table. You have quite a bit of influence in the community. And I hear what you're saying, and I'm sorry that I can't be there in person to say this in person. For me, some of the positions that you've held, and you've been very vocal in public, and I think that the response to some of your points of view have gotten a lot of pushback from the medical community, and have been really counter to what the Board of Health was promoting and presenting, and even the administration during the pandemic. And for that reason, I unfortunately am not going to support your reappointment today. In no means do I think you should be silenced. But as I said, there isn't a different format for doing this, so unfortunately, today, in this way, is the only time I had a chance to discuss this around this table. So as I said, I do think you offer a point of view that is probably reflective of people in the community, but on the Board of Health, as it's been so counter at times to what the Board itself and the Public Health Director have put forward, as I said, for that reason, I won't be supporting your reappointment today.
Am I allowed to have a discussion right now?
Yeah, let me just, so Nancy, I know that you like to call people up before we appoint or reappoint. Did you have an opportunity to call Sally prior?
I have followed Sally for the past many years. I do know her. I know her points of view. We've been on the receiving, I've been on the receiving ends. I do think that it speaks for itself, so in that case, I didn't call specifically, but, you know, and have even expressed my counterpoints of view often over the past 40 years.
So my response to that would be that you did not reach out to me directly on anything, so I would have appreciated that. I would want to just...
Unfortunately, I didn't even know that you were being up for reappointment, or we would have had a chance to talk about it before that, but I was given the agenda late Friday, and this is the only opportunity.
It's in every year term, and so, you know, just based on that, it would have been within this timeframe. But I will say that I, first of all, I think it's very important to note that with March Hotchkiss, with the former board member, Henry Yun, the head of the board, you can actually ask any of them directly. We had a very good working relationship. They've been very supportive of me, and we actually did have many, you know, conversations surrounding some of the concern areas. And even though there was sometimes a difference of opinion, certainly there was nothing that was completely, you know, the antithesis of what the recommendations were. And in my opinion, I'd like to say that I was an advocate. Certainly, there were a couple passionate moments that I will wholeheartedly take responsibility for, and one of those had to do with, as we know, suicide of a member of the community, where I felt that I very strongly had addressed the Board of Education and the Board of Health to be more proactive in that moment after recent suicides that had occurred in surrounding areas. And then after that circum, after that occurred, that family, who I'm very close with, ended up being very proactive and subsequent to that conversation. And those conversations, that's right when actually our Board of Education did reconvene in-person school. So again, I think it's very important, as someone who's an educated individual, to have, to take a critical look at things. We need to also remember, looking back at a couple years back, things like the, even the vaccination, were basically said that once you get this, there will be no more transmission, we can protect ourselves and everyone else because there won't be transmission. The breakthrough cases were very minimal at the time. We obviously know that that is now not the case. As someone who's a neuroscience major and a speech-language pathology major with my master's, is that science changes. It's all based in theory until actual scientific studies are carried out longitudinally. And we now know that what was taught as truth, that there are elements of that that have changed over the years. And I was actually one of the people who questioned that, and now I know that it was rightfully so. So again, you know, if that is your perspective, I understand it, but I am fully confident in all of my decision-making. And the, a couple of times I was more emotional, I had conversations with people and apologized for that, that I could have dealt with that a little bit better, but I think that was an extremely emotional time for all of us. And I will once again reiterate that for many people who were remote during that entire time, I was still going into every patient's house and treating people even who came out of hospitals. With COVID, we had no choice, we had no furlough, we had no opportunity to not even participate and do our jobs, those of us in the healthcare world. And I was completely compliant with, you know, the vaccination schedule, with everything, because that was my job, and I needed to be there for those patients, and followed all of the rules with PPE. And so I just, you know, you may have a different perspective, Nancy is someone who was in a completely different world during that time, so.
So I just want to jump in and say that, so I understand there's, you know, there's some disagreement, and listen, I think that diverging opinions and diverse opinions are important for our democracy. I don't think, I mean, listen, I deal with it every single day. And I, obviously, we all dealt with it during the pandemic, and I feel like I spoke to every single person in this entire town during the pandemic, and there's a lot of different opinions and a lot of different emotions. However, we're talking about appointing someone who has some qualifications that are in line with the Board of Health. And I would ask you, Nancy, if you feel that you are not willing or not able to support this, would you be willing to table this appointment?
I understand what you're asking, and I understand that we're in a difficult position, but I feel the reason, the reason I'm, so a few things I want to respond to, and I'm thinking this through in real time. I'm thinking this through in real time. I did speak to some members of the Board of Health, and they confidentially expressed concern about, about points of view represented during that time, Sally. I do not think by any means you should be silenced. I agree that diverging points of view are important. I think it's how we get to informed decisions, and I think it's also what makes our democracy interesting. So I'm not arguing that. I think it's very different when you publicly represent a board and some of your public actions, which, again, you should not be silenced, but it's very different than when you're representing a board. I do know on the flip side of that, that you've been an active member, and that this Public Health Board Commission member has said that you do provide an opportunity to hear what some diverging members of the community feel. And while often not in the majority position, it is sometimes helpful to see where, what the temperature of the community is. I am thinking still about your question, Brenda. I know, Sally, that you are an active member. As I said, you go to the meetings. I would just, if I am going to table the discussion, I would just ask for a few things. I think you need to be really mindful about, because you are such an influential person. You do have the mouthpiece, you do have a voice that people listen to. You are someone who influences things. And ultimately, because the Board of Health did reassure me, a couple of the members, that your position, while often the minority one, because it was often the minority one, I'm really leaning to allowing the conversation to be, or the vote to be tabled, because I know that you are an active participant. I do feel put on the spot. I feel like this is exactly why I wish there was a better process for having board and commission members chosen. So I'm willing, I'm willing to table the discussion, but I just want to go on the record that my vote is not going to change. I'm doing this because I don't, I don't think you should be silenced, Sally. It's a really, by asking me whether you are putting me in a difficult situation, because I know what happens by tabling it, it means that my vote doesn't have the weight and the power. But I'm also taking the confidence of the other Board of Health members that I talked to, saying that, yeah, so, go ahead.
So I could make a mo, I could withdraw my motion, and then we could move to table, if you're agreeable.
Can we table the vote until, I just need some time to think about what we've talked about, and, and...
Right, so I could, I could withdraw my motion, and we can move to table to the next regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting.
What I'm asking is to move to table it to later in the meeting, just so I have time to marinate on what we've just talked about, and I just don't, I need to think about it. So what I'm asking is, can we move this to the, towards the end of the meeting? And then we can make a different decision. I just, I'm not, if the, if the answer is, do I want to table it now to the next meeting, then I would say no, but if you give me time to stew on it, I may change that opinion.
Okay, I, let me finish. So, all right, that's an unusual request, because we do have other items. So I'm actually not sure what the protocol is.
Then I would just say, let's, then I would say, let's proceed with the vote.
So you, you wouldn't second a motion to table?
No.
And you want to proceed with the vote?
Yes. Unless you're, well, I just, I, like I said, you're, if we can move it to the end of the discussion, you're saying it's unusual, well, I just feel...
No, I'll do that. I just, Miss Conley would have to wait throughout the whole meeting until the end, so...
What I would say there is that I absolutely have heard her perspective, and that's not going to weigh my decision, because my vote isn't going to change whether we have it now or later, so I don't necessarily think she needs to stay through. But what I just need is some time to think about this discussion, removed from the emotion of it.
Can I say something else? Okay. One thing, Nancy, I think that's important to consider, is that the Board of Health in no way made any policy changes, that it is a forum in which the members can bring concern to the community from their perspective. I think that is a very important part. I, you know, also...
I agree.
I am not changing anything. And I, you and I have had conversations before, that's actually one reason I wanted to show up here in person, was that there was actually an opportunity. So there's a couple things that I do want to say, is that, one, I will, I will say there were two meetings that could have been handled better. I am, I think it's very important for people to be able to comment on just the past, okay? I need you to take a look at the fact that this was my very first time being a member of a board, and may have been in the public eye, but not within that context, which I think is an important consideration, okay? We met during different things. I will say there was... No, no, I'd like to finish this, please, if that's okay, please. There was one time where a comment was misconstrued, that is my opinion. You may see that differently, but it was based on a conversation about fact with members of the skilled nursing facility community. It may have come off harsh, but it was verbatim. So I just want to say that. I apologize if that came off wrong, and so I do have an issue with there being, I know it's thrown around probably too much, but, you know, a cancel culture, where someone, you know, you're in the film industry, you know, you know in that context, one statement that someone says, it can get misinterpreted, it can get taken out of context, it can get put on the social media, and I do not think it's fair for someone to take a snippet and to let that outweigh, basically, their life's work, okay? And my entire life's work is taking care of patients every day, and that's what I do, and no one will ever give a bad recommendation about me as a clinician and caregiver, because that is what I do with my life. The second one had to do with a suicide. And Kevin Cuso was my son's very close friend, who we sat at lunch with every day, and got driven home from every day, driven home from school every day. And, you know, I wish that I maybe could have been a little less emotional about that, but to ask someone who had been worrying about that for so long, to not be a bit emotional in a meeting is, I think, unrealistic. And you know what? Again, I am very happy that I fought for that. And, and again, I will say, that is why we're injecting so much FEL into the schools, the social-emotional learning. You know that, Nancy. You are seeing the after effects. Everyone is seeing the after effects that we could have read about in studies from China, from other pandemics. But we chose to focus on, my point in those meetings was to say, that we are continually, continuously focusing on one health metric, which is understandable, but we allowed it to supersede everything else. And I'd be going into those patients' homes and seeing the addictions, the depression, everything else. It was my right to say that, because no one else was inside the homes and seeing what was going on there. So, yeah, you know what? I was passionate about it. And, but lastly, I'm just, I mean, whether or not I'm on the Board of Health, I mean, really in the grand scheme of things, I guess it doesn't really matter, you know? It doesn't, but I would be very disappointed that you and the person that I met and know, and the conversations that we've had in the past, and the fact that you are someone who tries to tell the truth through film and tell a story, that you would be a participant in silencing the perspective of an individual. If you can give me actual proof of how I was extremely flippant throughout the pandemic, honestly be my guess, but I will tell you right now that any time I was promoting restaurants, I was following the rules of the state level. When restaurants opened, yes, I was there. You know what? I was there because I wanted to support our small businesses. I took pictures of it. But, you know, I was always following the rules as far as coming in with a mask, taking it off to have your food and drink, but, yeah, people would have seen me out more because I was comfortable, because I was out from day one, and I had been exposed to patients day after day after day. So I didn't feel as isolated as other people. And honestly, a lot of people said to me that that helped them to get back to normalcy instead of the isolation and the anxiety. So you need to also look at the fact that there were a lot of other people who were happy to have a model of somebody who could find normalcy in and after the pandemic, because we also know about how school refusal rates, so many things went through the roof because of the anxiety. So again, whatever perspective you're looking at, I personally think you're not looking at a larger global perspective. You're looking at the local perspective of just a few snippets that didn't go the way you wanted it to. So that's my view.
Okay, so, Madam for Selectwoman in response, I would just say that regardless, I would say that a no vote is not the, is not paramount or tantamount to silencing you, and no, by no means would I suggest that you should be silenced. As I started, I think you, you do provide a perspective that is indicative of where other people in the community are, and for that reason, I think it's one that should not be silenced. Whether or not I think that that's a voice that should be amplified through the work of the board, I don't. That being said, I also think this has taken a pretty inappropriate emotional turn. So for that reason, I will, I am willing to table this conversation, because I'm very uncomfortable with where it's, where it's gone. And I really don't have much more to add today. I think that the nature of this conversation regarding an appointment, I'd just like to say for the record, I do think this has not been an appropriate forum, but I'm also willing to table it, because I think it has turned to an emotional place. And I also think that, as I said, I want to highlight and underscore, for anyone that is listening, and for the record, that not appointing someone is not paramount or tantamount to, to silencing them, because that's just not true, or fair, or appropriate. So I...
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump back in now. So I'm gonna, again, offer my withdrawal of my motion, and ask that we table this to the next scheduled meeting.
Brenda, this is Jim Baldwin. I think that the appropriate term is to postpone it to the, to the next meeting, next regular meeting.
Do I have to withdraw my motion first, Attorney Baldwin?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Is there action, do I need to second that?
Yes.
No. No, she can withdraw her motion.
Okay, without a second? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I am going to make a motion to, to table this item till the next scheduled meeting, postpone for the next scheduled meeting.
Right.
I'll second it for the, again, for the purpose of discussion, and I will agree to it, but I would like to comment, so I seconded. But I'll add that this also, to me, highlights the very flawed process of putting forth candidates. So I have nothing further to say, and I'm ready to take a vote on the, on postponing this to the, to the date certain.
So I would like to just make, again, my repeated comments to every time you comment that we have a flawed process. The process has never been more transparent and open, and I grew up here, by the way, so that's 58 years, and over 20 of them involved in local government. For the first time in the history of this town, our appointments are put in a newsletter, where over 25,000 people have an opportunity to look at them. We have had people who have never served in any capacity in any town board before I started doing that. I know what the history was of appointments. I was involved in our town government for over 20 years. They were political appointments. Democrats put up their Democrats, Republicans put up their Republicans. It was never just open to the general public, who might have some insight, expertise, and information that would actually be helpful to different various boards and commissions. So I have followed along all the majority rules. I have taken literally, I would believe, 99% of your recommendations for appointments. They have been voted on unanimously. I've never had an issue, even if I may have had an issue with someone not having qualifications... I've never had an issue, even if I may have had an issue with someone not having qualifications that pertain to the particular board they were being appointed to or even showing up to any of their board meetings. I never said a word about that, appointments that were put forth by you. So I have to say, I'm, I just, I find it just troubling that you continually say there's a flawed process when you're not explaining what the flaw is.
Okay, so I'm so happy to do that and thank you for that. I think that the process that you describe up to that point is, is great. It's great that there is an open call for applications. But when it's, when I, one of the key things, one of the key, um, job descriptions of the Board of Selectmen per the charter is to oversee the boards and commissions, and there are no metrics once they're on. So for reappointments, I often don't know who, most often, I would say 99 plus percent of the time, don't know who is gonna come before us until the Friday before the Monday meeting. And so things like what has just happened today happen. You've often said it, it's a lot of work. I'm, I am, I do give recommendations. I don't know that they're ever considered, and we should be talking about those recommendations. You shouldn't just be taking them at face value. So my frustration is as much a part of a lack of willingness to look at the overall process. So we can keep talking about this. I do think it's great that they're in the newsletter, but I think it needs to go a step further. And, you know, again, we can agree to disagree. It is, it is your prerogative, and it's not just that it's a Democratic Republican balance that I question, so. It's the way in which we, we get candidates. And as I said, as the minority voice, I'm not given a voice. And it's often after the fact when they hit the agenda that I see who's even, uh, being, being put up. But I'm willing to work with it today, going back to the subject at hand. I'm willing to work with, with you and, and table this motion, which I think does highlight a willingness to work and, um, to work with you. So, uh, I know there are other items on, on today's agenda, so happy to move forward.
Thank you. And just to clarify for the record, um, I don't believe I rejected any appointment you brought before me that you endorsed and asked to be put on any board and commission. So that's just for the record. And many of the people that have applied through the newsletter, I hadn't met prior to them applying either. And what we typically look for are for people who have some sort of expertise or knowledge base in the particular field. And I would say, for example, the Greater Bridgeport Transit Authority, someone applied for it, they actually worked in the transit authority in another state. So I figured that'd be a great person. You know, that's how sort of this works. I don't really know what all the, um, sort of issues have seemed to be about this, but again, always willing to hear any points of view that you would like to share with me that would improve the process.
Well, through your, um, because, you know, we are prevented from speaking directly about agenda items because of FOIA, but, but through your designees, it would be great, for instance, as one example, uh, to see some of the candidates that you're thinking about, so that we could have a discussion about who those candidates are, so that we could make calls vetting the various candidates when there are multiple. So just something to think about moving forward.
Just for the public's edification, every single person who applies to be on the board, that email goes directly from the website to the Board of Selectmen. That means I get a copy, you get a copy, and Mr. Flynn gets a copy. So you get to see every single person who applies to be on any board and a commission at the exact same time that I do, with their name, address, phone number, and email address, and whatever pertinent information they'd like to share to be considered for their application. So you do get it at the same time as I do.
Right, but often I don't know what commission needs to be filled, um, because as you, you have alluded to on, on many occasions, there is a lot. It is changing. So it would be great to get in advance of it showing up on the agenda. I do see the applications, but I don't know what's relevant or who you're looking at. Sometimes applications have been sent months prior. So it would be great to, um, have from your office what positions you're filling in.
Well, you have asked Jennifer for that, and she has supplied you with vacancy openings. Um, and they are always listed as well on the website, so it's not too hard to, to know what they are.
Well, it would be great to get them in advance and including the candidates that are being considered.
Okay, so, uh, we have a motion on the floor for table. And, uh, did you second it, Nancy? She did?
I did.
Okay.
Postpone.
Postpone, excuse me, to postpone to the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Hi.
Thank you.
Bye.
Got me a port to do.
Okay. Our next item, um, um, is, um, a purchasing item. I want to welcome our new purchasing director, Adam, Adam Toulon, uh, who is gonna present his first item before the Board of Selectmen with our Assistant DPW Director, John Kettle. So ma'am, may I have a motion to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into a proposed contract with Janie Montgomery Scott, LLC to provide investment advisory services regarding selected general operating fund assets detailed in the RFP number listed in the agenda for a total fee not to exceed 15 basis points. Do I, what?
Yeah, so moved.
He's the next, Johnson's the next one.
I'm the next one.
Oh, it says John, I'm sorry. Okay, I apologize, John. I thought you were part of this. Um, I do want to say before Adam stops and discusses this item, um, that I just want to say that Gerald Foley, our, our purchasing director, um, retired on the 20th, and I just want to extend our well wishes on behalf of the Town of Fairfield for his, uh, his time and effort and dedication to our town. And I did include some information about his service in the newsletter, and, um, I just wanted to acknowledge him publicly here. And I will hand it over to you.
Great, thank you, Brenda. I'm Adam Toulon, uh, new purchasing director as advertised. And just to clarify, uh, the next item we'll be, uh, John Kettle, this one is for the Finance Department. So this is pertaining to RFP 2023-07 for Investment Management Consulting Services. Uh, we, the town put out an RFP, uh, last summer, summer of '22, and we received nine responses. You know, this is to, uh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So nine responses were received, and ultimately a committee was put together and shortlisted four firms to bring in for an interview. Uh, the interviews were held back in November, and the committee ultimately unanimously ranked Janie Montgomery Scott as the top selection in the RFP process. In particular, they were, uh, top ranked for their approach to investment services amongst a number of things. Just for the record, this is not a budgeted line item. As Brenda indicated in the resolution, uh, there will be an annual cost of 15 basis points, or that's, uh, 0.15% of the market value of the assets that will be managed under the contract, um, which will include portfolio management, trading costs, brokerage services, and other tasks outlined in the RFP. I believe there's a question about the contract, um, that will need to be addressed.
Um, Attorney Baldwin, do you see?
Yes.
Attorney Baldwin?
Yeah, the, the, the town has an existing agreement with this firm. However, uh, they, they want to rely upon that agreement, and we're gonna revisit it pursuant to the RFP terms itself, section 1.3, which speaks to, uh, an agreement being reached between the two parties. So that has not yet happened, but as, as been the case previously, while we don't have that contract before us, if you would consider approving this item subject to terms and conditions that are acceptable to the town attorney.
Do we need to make a motion to that effect, an amended motion?
Well, actually, in, in, in this case, I don't think it's, it's necessary because the, the RFP that it is in your package speaks to that. And, and so I think it's just a matter of due course, but I'm just, uh, following up on what Adam said and explaining why you don't have a formal agreement in your materials. It's because it has not yet been, uh, discussed. So you're, you're approving it with that understanding.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay. All right, so if there's no further questions from the board, is there any questions from the public? Hearing none. Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Adam. All right. What we got? Item number six, uh, number seven. Uh, can I get a motion to hear, consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed contract with Anvil's Connecticut LLP to provide repair and replace the stairs at the Town's transfer station facility in detailed bid, uh, number according to the, uh, agenda for a total fee not to exceed $19,800, with additional authority to execute change orders to said contract in the amount not to exceed 1,980 for combined grand total amount not to exceed 21,780 account number, number listed in the agenda, transfer station repairs fund. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, we have, uh, Adam up again, and Jared Smith, if he needs, um.
No.
No. Well, I don't know. Jennifer wrote this here in my notes.
I mean, I got her relationship.
She switched it up.
I think this is a, a pretty straightforward. If there's any questions about the project specifically, I think John could, John could step in.
Yep.
Yep, so we put out a bid, uh, number 2023-69R, stair repair replacement at the transfer station facility, basically just looking to upgrade the existing stair situation there to meet current OSHA standards. Bids were solicited, uh, in November with a due date of January 3rd, 2023. We ultimately received four bids. After performing scope review with the low bidder, that's Anvil CT, um, we're comfortable recommending award, uh, to them. Their bid was, as stated, $19,800. That's about it.
Okay, John, you wanna talk at all? Nancy, do you have any questions? I mean, you're on the WPCA.
Yeah, I don't, yep, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
We need to throw it out.
All right, very good. All right, if there's no, uh, questions, uh, from the board, is there any questions from the public? Seeing none. Back to the board. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Moving right.
Moving right.
Uh, this is next, this is my favorite one. I'm gonna make, uh, a, can I get a motion, uh, to hear and consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Community and Economic Development?
Should I waive the reading? Can I make a move to waive the reading? Yep, sorry.
Sure.
So I move to waive the reading.
It's actually, it's actually kind of short, and it might give the, uh, public a little information, so.
I'll move forward.
Okay, um, okay, thanks. Resolved that the Town of Fairfield by its First Selectwoman Brenda Cupchik is authorized to enter into a ground lease for 75 years with Habitat for Humanity to build four units of affordable home ownership housing at 244 Greenfield Street with no cost to the town, and for the resolve that First Selectwoman Brenda Cupchik is authorized to execute all documents in connection there, too. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. And Mr. Reinhardt, come up and talk about how awesome this is gonna be.
Hi, good afternoon. Mark Barnhart, Director of Community and Economic Development. This matter has actually been before the board several times.
Yes, yes.
As you may recall, uh, the board authorized the purchase of private property at 244 Greenfield Street, which we added to a budding town-owned property to create the two building lots that we're talking about this afternoon. You also, uh, approved an authorization of the Housing Trust Fund to purchase the property. And subsequently, uh, the board, uh, approved a development agreement with Habitat for Humanity, which was our preferred development partner. We selected them through a competitive process through the Purchasing Department, um, last year. So, uh, we're now before you with respect to the ground lease, um, as indicated in the term of the resolution, um, proposing to enter into a term of 75 years, which is renewable. The purpose initially is for Habitat then to, um, develop the project, which would include, um, all aspects of the development process, design, financing, permitting, construction, and eventual sale of units. Included in your packet is the ground lease itself as well as, um, other, um, associated documents, including the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions. The one thing I would point out in that declaration is that, uh, through Habitat's good work and the fact that they're financing this, uh, they're acting as the mortgagie and providing no interest, uh, mortgages, uh, to prospective homeowners here that were able to target a population at 60% of the AMI, which is very unusual for homeownership development, and, um, we're very excited about that. So, um, I'm happy to take any questions. This is the last step in the process, uh, before we actually then proceed to a building permit, uh, and then start construction hopefully this spring. This will require, uh, the review and approval of the RTM in addition to this body. Uh, we did, hopefully, I believe Attorney Baldwin's on the phone, uh, but we did check with the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission and staff. This was brought before the Commission previously, and in that, um, referral under Connecticut General Statute 8-24, we did indicate the intent of the program was not only to acquire but enter into a development agreement and ground lease, uh, property to that development partner, uh, for eventual, uh, affordable homeownership development. So, um, we believe that we've satisfied requirements of the mandatory referral under 824 based on that previous action. So it will require RTM approval, hopefully, uh, with this board's blessing, we will go to them in February. Happy to take any questions.
No, thanks, Mark. And, and just for the public's, uh, edification, you know, I spent nine years on the Housing Committee in Hartford, and, uh, as we all know, um, 8-30G, which, you know, I'm not very shy about talking about, I don't think it does anything really to, um, uh, add affordable housing. It's a big deal to have a 60% area median income because even, uh, 8-30G is 80% of the area median, area median income, which, as we know, in Fairfield County, isn't really that affordable. So 60% is really affordable. And I have to say, I wish we could go over, go off to Hartford and do a presentation to the governor, um, and the Housing Committee, uh, up there, so that they can see that towns can actually do this stuff. We can actually build real affordable housing without giving, um, a free ride to developers and who are using the 8-30G statutes in many cases. So this is, this is really a home run, and it is a prime example of that towns can do things on their own. And if we, if our state could be more proactive and offering sticks like, you know, carrots for, for communities instead of sticks, and working with communities to help them to do something like we are doing, um, it would be, I just think, so much more beneficial. And I, I wanna, uh, be on the record as giving so much credit to Mark Barnhart for all his hard work putting this together. He is the Economic Development Director, just so we're all clear. But he, he does so much work, uh, with affordable housing and is so incredibly helpful to the Affordable Housing Commission, um, works with, um, it, all the programs that assist our residents and, uh, people who are trying to do real affordable housing in town. And so you go above and beyond, you should really be the economic development slash affordable housing guru, um, should get two salaries for it, too. But, uh, Mark, Mark does a great job, and we're really, uh, lucky to have him, and I really want to say I appreciate all your hard work on it.
And if I could go further, yeah, I'll go further and evoke or invoke a word that you used earlier, which is awesome. So I think this is great. We talked about it earlier. I don't have any additional questions except to say thank you, and we're really lucky to have you advocating.
All right, well, this is good stuff. This is, uh, this is the kind of stuff I talked about doing when I first came in and then how important it was to show, uh, that we can do it and, and we're doing it. So if, uh, if there's no further comment from the board, if there's any, is there any comment from the public? from the public? Seeing none. Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Awesome. Thanks, Mark. Our next item is, can I get a motion to approve the Board of Selectment budget meeting dates for calendar year 2023 at 10:00 a.m. via WebEx or and in or person at the first floor conference room at Independence Hall? And the dates would be February 21st, Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. for our first hearing, our public budget hearing, and then February 22nd, Wednesday, 10:00 a.m. for hearing number two.
Yeah, so moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. And B, Board of Selectmen final budget deliberations and public executive session on February 27th, Monday at 10:00 a.m.
So moved now, yes.
Okay, second, and is there any discussion on this item?
Nope, all good.
Is there any discussion from the public? Hearing none. Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, very good. Our next item, motion to consider an act upon the tax-free funds as recommended by the Tax Collector in the amount of $32,067.02.
So moved.
Second, is there any discussion on this item? Any discussion from the public? Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And our last item, I just have a few items. I did want to mention, and I didn't mention at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Flynn had a business conflict, and he wasn't able to WebEx in, so I just want to mention for the public. On January 23rd, I gave my State of the Town address before the RTM, highlighting the achievements and initiatives our town has made over the last year. The public can click on the town's website to read the newsletter where there's information about the state of the town. And the Capital Plan Workshop is tomorrow night at the Board of Finance meeting. This is culmination, this is something we've been doing for a number of years. We did it much differently this year, where we've been meeting approximately seven months with two Board of Finance members, two RTM members, and the leadership of the school district, and the Board of Education leadership, and the town's Finance Department, and we've been going through these items very in-depth, which has been very different than how it's been done in the past, where we just did one-night capital workshop. So we've came a long way, and we got a lot of good stuff together. So there's going to be a capital workshop, just again, for everyone's edification, there are no votes at these meetings. This is just a presentation of projects that we have reviewed and prioritized, and there's no vote on them. It's just sort of an informational session. And then I also want to remind eligible seniors and disabled persons that the Assessor's Office is accepting applications for tax relief between Wednesday, February 1, and Monday, May 15. And obviously, I'll include that in my newsletter, but I just want to, just in case anyone is listening. This coming Wednesday is also the Chamber of Commerce's Economic Outlook Breakfast. Tickets can be bought online at the Chamber's website. This is usually a very well-attended event by our local business owners, which is great, and I always make a statement about our town's economic sort of outlook, and this year we're going to be having our Economic Development Director, who's only going to wear that hat that morning, to talk about all the stuff we've been working on and how Fairfield's got a very bright future. I just want to say that our Connecticut Chapter of American Planning Association awarded Fairfield with the Engaging with Graphics Award for its efforts in the Post-Road Circle Study, so kudos to our Engineering Department and our Planning Department. Sustainable CT recognized Fairfield as one of only five towns in Connecticut with the Climate Leader distinction for outstanding achievements in sustainability. So extending my thanks and gratitude to the Sustainable Task Force for their excellent work, and they really do a great job, and I appreciate all their hard work. I also want to recognize the Norma Freeman Breast Center honored the town for its loyal support for the pink pledge, visiting many departments who participated in their, in these efforts this year. We had a lot of fun for the first time. We did a sort of a challenge. I remember I mentioned it during a Board of Selectment meeting, where we challenged departments to wear pink and to donate, and it actually became a sort of a fun activity. We were all competing, departments. Some people got a little bit more dressed up than others. Tax collector's office, but, but we actually raised a lot of money and, and for them and for the cause, so we were, we enjoyed it, and they came by and recognized us for it. And so that's the only thing I had to update. Did you have anything, Nancy, you wanted to?
I, I would. On this one-year anniversary since the now-defunct Racial Equity and Justice Task Force had turned in its racial equity blueprint to the town, and in light of the murder of Tyree Nichols, I hope it acts as a call, a catalyst for renewed action. I'd like to say congratulations to the Fairfield Public Schools, who've taken action by acknowledging Eid as a public holiday. I'd like to acknowledge our Police Department. I feel very lucky to live in a community that is constantly, where its police force is constantly engaging in ways in which they can make racial equity and justice a priority. The chief has done so and has committed to that. I feel lucky that we do live in that community. But I also want to remind us that as a, both a body and to remind the administration that there was a lot of good work that went into the 18-month term of the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force. They came up with a blueprint that offered some really salient, still-relevant opportunities that are launch point for discussion, including a resolution that the Democrats on the Board of, on the RTM had worked to get passed. And so, again, it's, I hope this murder of Tyree Nichols acts as a catalyst for renewed commitment to ongoing work to look at the systems, not at the individuals, because I don't believe that Fairfield is a community of, of individual racists, but I do think that there's always an opportunity to look at the systems in place that make it difficult at times for the 10% of non-white residents that live here.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have nothing, I have nothing further at this time.
Okay, very good. All right. If there's no further comments or information to be shared, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night, everyone.